I'd like to call to order the council meeting for Tuesday, September 6, 2016. If we could all stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the color of the holy saints, one nation under God, indivisible, in which there is justice,
Thank you. Madam Secretary, may I please have your call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Derrick Perry, Sonia Sanders.
May I please get a member of council to make a motion to approve the council minutes from August 16, 2016? All in favor?
Aye.
Council minutes passed for August 16, 2016. There was no executive session this evening, which brings us to the presentation for the oath of office for the council at large position. If I please may have Sue Ann Gardner, please come to the front.
All right, are you prepared to take the oath?
I am.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this commonwealth
and the Constitution of this commonwealth
and that I will discharge the duties
and that I will discharge the duties
of my office with fidelity
of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, councilwoman.
Thank you.
This is it, no turning back.
Thank you, Judge Scott. Vice President Perry, are there any announcements this evening?
We have Keep America Beautiful. We're looking for people to serve on the committee. It's on issues of litter in Norristown. You would contact Crandall Jones on October 29. The NAACP is hosting a luncheon at the Westover Country Club for the STEM Program for Youth Recognition. You would contact Councilwoman Valerie Scott Cooper for that. This upcoming Sunday on 9/11, we have the Heroes Race 5K, which is at Sunday, 9:00 a.m. in front of the courthouse. Afterwards, we'll have the Budweiser Clydesdale Horses March from Grex, and that'll be at 10:15 a.m. Does anyone else have any announcements? Ms. Lowes, Councilwoman Lowes.
This Saturday at Riverfront Park will be the ribbon cutting ceremony. I believe it's at 2:30. They have installed new docks, so please join us there.
And Mr. Jones, do we have, when is the Citizens Leadership Academy? We have Citizens Leadership Academy, which gives an overview of all of what council does in the municipality. You can ask a lot of questions in there, get a lot of answers. That is being held from October 6 through December 1 here in Municipal Hall. We welcome everyone who has questions in regards to the government to please sign up for that. We also have the Capital Improvement Plan, public meeting. We want the community to join us in deciding Norristown's future in regards to our capital improvement plan. We have Thursday, September 29 at 6:00 p.m. at the Montgomery County Intermediary Unit. We have Thursday, October 6 at 12:30 p.m. right here at the municipal hall. And 6:00 p.m. here at Municipal Hall, please come out and dictate our future for this capital improvement plan. And that's it.
Thank you, Vice President Perry. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes. Denise Ash? Okay. Mary Ellen D. Gregorio? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council. My name is Mary Ellen D. Gregorio,号楼564, East Main Street. I'm here because of a recent incident, so I'm just going to read from what I've put together, so I'm not wasting any time, because I'm not going to get any answers from you tonight, because this is common. But the new councilperson, Suzanne Gardner of Norristown Hills, welcome. I hope you are an open-minded person who has the capability of thinking for oneself and not falling victim to manipulation that I have witnessed and experienced over council members have fallen for in the past. I would like to commend tonight on the way council and municipality handled the process of this replacement. For many of us who have been active throughout the community have known that any time a councilperson steps down, the majority party is the chooser of the replacement of that seat. So when I saw on council's website that Norristown Municipality was accepting applications, I began to think, wow, maybe change is coming. So when the announcement was done, I quickly applied for the public position, and my thoughts were, I'm not going to get this, but I'm still going to push through with it. Now, I received a letter on Saturday, the 27th, with an outline of the Home Rule Charter that I was part of writing, and a letter and an affidavit stating that should I be chose for an interview, they would need this affidavit at the time of the interview, and that I was being offered services by the municipality for notary services by the secretary. On August 29, I immediately went down to Municipal Hall to have the notarization done just in case I received a call, and was told by the secretary, which was quite unprofessional, that I wasn't chosen. And I just said to her, well, I still would like to get this notarized, not that I'm looking down on her and her position, but her position is secretary, and this was a choice being made by municipal Norristown council. So I proceeded to get the affidavit notarized and left. By the time I got home, I received a poor, unprofessional, totally disregarding to any type of business letter stating I was not chosen for an interview. At the end, it was just typed up, Norristown Municipal Council. No signature, nothing. So what I don't understand is I had, like I said, no intention on taking the seat. Okay, it was not my hope and dream, but it was my ability to see if my municipal council is doing what they're telling us they have been doing of hope and change is coming, only to find out that this was poorly, poorly handled, and that it has really disappointed me again over the years of how business is conducted within the municipality, very poorly. Now, in order for me to have any confidence that my tax dollars are working for my community to their fullest potential has shaken me because of the level of mistakes that have occurred along the way of my 33 years being involved in Norristown. However, I will try my best to accept a new councilperson and hope that she has the will not to be showered with too many flowers, Villanova tickets, or fake praises, to believe that everything she is voting for is in the best interest of my community, or for the best interest of the person that's calling the shots from the sidelines. In closing, I'd also like to address Council President Sonia Fisher Sanders. She made a statement in the press that this council is the most transparent council this town has ever seen. How is it possible to make such a statement considering you have never attended a council meeting prior to you winning your seat on council? So I just wanted to let you know that this was handled very poorly, and there really isn't any kind of a spin that you can give me that will make me see that you guys have really changed. It's the same lip service that I've been getting my whole entire life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wally Harris?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Wally Harris?
Thank you. Welcome to the new councilwoman.
May I please have your name and address, sir?
Pardon?
May I please have your name and your address?
Oh, Wally Harris, 618 Noble Street, Norristown. Well, new council lady, just as a little side comment, when I was a boy, some of my fondest memories are picking asparagus and strawberries with my grandfather out in the Norris Hills area, was Benny Callamy's farm. And I picked asparagus and strawberries out there where Linda Lain did it. Good memories. My main reason for getting up here tonight was to ask a question. I don't know which one of you people would be qualified to answer or want to answer. Going around town lately, I've seen a lot of signs popping up. We buy houses. One in particular, Marie Buys Houses. These signs are popping up everywhere, on poles, on stakes by the side of the road. They're all over the place. It's my personal feeling that these signs cheapen our town and lower our property values, making it seem like no one wants to move here. Where I live up at the 600 block of Noble Street, houses are actually beginning to go for fair market value, and they're selling quite quickly. My question is, if a citizen sees these signs and wants to take them down, are we allowed to do that, or is that something we're not allowed to do? Best left to the police or the public works. Just a question, if anyone can answer, I appreciate it. I'm willing to stop and pick them out when I see them, if I'm real loud.
Thank you very much for bringing this to council administration's attention. If it's on private property, meaning if it's on someone's lawn or something, of course you can't touch it. But if it is in a public right-of-way, meaning someone placed it on a pole or someone related to that, you can do one of two things. You could call Mr. Jones's office and bring it to his attention, code him to come out and look at it. And if it, you know, if it's in a public right-of-way and was not put up by the municipality, you're free, if it's in your area or your space, you're free, of course, yourself to take it down. But if you want the municipality to do it, I would recommend that you contact Mr. Jones's office.
Oh, I'd like to pledge in doing it myself, so. I'll carry a step ladder with me if necessary, but I appreciate your answer, especially keeping them on private property. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Madam Secretary, do we have any communication this evening?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Moving on to the next order of business, we have the municipal administrator. If you could, just give us a brief description of ordinance 16-11 in regards to the responsible contractor ordinance.
Thank you, Madam President. Council members, ordinance 16-11 is a request of council to approve amending the municipality's responsible contractor ordinance to make the apprenticeship requirement apply for projects that exceed $350,000, and remove a requirement for contractors to provide arbitration procedures as well as delete a policy relating to those requirements. Council members, as you recall from our previous discussions on this in multiple work sessions, the issue that is on the table has to do with the fact that we have not been able to move projects, capital projects that the council has approved along, as a result of two things. One, ambivalence among contractors to vote, excuse me, to bid on our projects. And two, for those few that do bid, those projects have been grossly overbid to the tune of as high as 180%. And so in having a discussion, not only with contractors and with the labor union Local 135, we shared our concerns about that, and because particularly for our CDBG projects, these delays are causing a situation where our funds, our CDBG funding, might be in jeopardy because we're too slow in spending the money that was awarded. We had multiple conversations with Local 135 about the implications of that. We had initially proposed that, or at least started the discussion, that we would recommend to council a ceiling of $500,000. After talking with them, we did come back and modify our request to $350,000. We believe that this will put us in a position so that projects such as the Simmons Park project, which got delayed for, it has been delayed since spring, and roof projects and other projects will be able to move on, and smaller projects will be able to move on without the onerous contractor, model contractor ordinance requirement of an apprenticeship program. And it's certainly in line with what a recommendation that HUD had given us several years ago saying that ordinances like that with that requirement do inhibit competition and could cause some problems with bidding, and we've certainly seen that. So that's our request, council. We have our labor attorney here, who's conflict counsel on this, I'm sorry, not our labor attorney, but our conflict counsel on this, Mr. Patrick Hitchens, who was with us in workshop and answered questions then, but certainly wanted to bring him forward if you had any questions again. But our request is that council approve this motion amending the ordinance.
Discussion question? I have a comment. So in regards to the ordinance, there have been many hours put forth via partnership between local Labor's 135, along with myself and the staff, in order to come to this decision. So we were pleased, as well as Local 135, one for the partnership and two for the agreement. Madam Secretary, may I please have your call?
Okay, was there a motion?
There was not, my apologies. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve ordinance 16-11, amending the municipality's responsible contractors ordinance to make the apprenticeship requirement apply for projects exceeding $350,000, remove a requirement for contractors to provide arbitration procedures, and delete the policy relating to those requirements? Madam Secretary, may I now please have your call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Sue Ann Gardner, Derrick Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Aye. Resolution ordinance 16-11 passes. Mr. Jones, item B, if you could, please give us a brief description of ordinance 16-12, establishing a bid review committee.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a motion that council, excuse me, this is a motion requested of council by staff to approve ordinance 16-12, which would establish a bid review committee to review bids exceeding budgeted costs and advise council accordingly. Again, this was one of the items that in our work with Mr. Hitchens, where we discovered we have currently on ordinance that if a project comes in over budget, that the project must automatically be rejected. We found that to be onerous in that sometimes projects are legitimately over budget, because even if it were a dollar, by that ordinance, we would have to reject the project and start all over again. As anybody who does procurement knows, you can't be 100% accurate in estimating the cost of a project. And so what we are requesting is that this ordinance, which would give the municipal administrator the ability to, if we get a project that's over budget, to form a committee that could review why the project is over budget, and come to council with a recommendation related to that analysis, which could be, it's over budget and should be rejected, it's legitimately over budget and could be accepted, or everything could, the whole project could be scrapped as a result of the review, rather than us go through the process of, as we do now, if a project is over budget, we start all over, and we've wasted engineering time, staff time, advertising time, and a project can legitimately be reviewed. The other good thing about this, and we had discussions with the labor union about this as well, is that when we were discussing bids on project, one of the concerns that the labor union had was that what if a project comes in way too low? Well, one of the things we assured them is, we recognize that projects can be underbid intentionally, and that would also be a cue for us to look at a project and say, hey, this is suspiciously low, and in those instances, a lot of times what we have is a situation where the bidder thinks they can make up the difference by having contract amendments added so that they can, you know, bring the bid up to what was competitive with others. So this would give us an opportunity to review projects too low and too high, because we automatically kind of look at too low projects with scrutiny. And also, one of the other things that we also conceded with the labor union is, sometimes we might be in error in terms of our estimates, and this would give us an opportunity to review that as well. One other important aspect of this piece of legislation also is that it gives the municipal engineer the authority to actually be at a bid opening, which is appropriate, because a lot of the bid openings that we do are for projects that the municipal engineer has put the specifications together for. So that's appropriate. So it is our request that council approve ordinance 16-12, establishing a new bid review committee to review bids exceeding budget costs and advise council accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 16-12, establishing a bid review committee to review bids exceeding budgeted costs and advise council? Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you. Could you review, again, for us the composition of this committee?
Certainly. It would be, it would depend on the type of project, but let's say typically in a project that's bricks and mortar, it would be myself, the finance director, the municipal engineer, and the public works director. If it is a project that is an economic development project, it would be myself, the, I'm sorry, myself, the planning and development director, it would be the finance director as well. So depending on the type of project it is, it would cue the staff that would be involved. It might also include, for instance, if we were looking at bids for police vehicles, police chief, fire vehicles, the fire chief. So it would be, it would be dependent on the discipline that's involved, but it would, like I said before, it would give us the ability to have a rational analysis of the project before we would flat-out ask council to reject the bid.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. There was a motion. I'm sorry, Councilman Hakeem Jones?
Yeah, you answered a lot of the question, but wouldn't these procedures be something that you guys already do when it comes to bids that come in?
We look at them, but by ordinance right now, if the ordinance says if the project is over bud, overbid, over the established budget, the project is rejected. And so that means we'd have to start all over from zero. What this does is say, gives us the ability to say, yeah, it is, but let's go back and look at it, let me pull in all the experts and say, why is it overbid, why is it overbudget? And then we then have the ability having to do that, we can look at it and say, well, you know what, the cost of materials did go up. We didn't anticipate this that would be involved in the project. And then we can come back to council and say, council, we looked at it, it makes sense that this number is a legitimate number, that the low bid number is a legitimate number, and we ask you to consider going ahead and awarding it anyway, as opposed to just really automatically having to throw it out. as opposed to just really automatically having to throw it out.
Vice President Perry?
Mr. Jones, can you explain to the people why we are coming up with a bid review committee in regards to our last three bids that we had?
Certainly. For the projects that we had, the last, I guess, the last three, one was the Simmons Park project. We bid that project actually three times. And the final time, it did come in overbid, over budget, significantly over, but that project actually came in about 200 and, I'm sorry, almost $300,000 over budget, over $300,000 over budget. The project that we had bid with the roof, we bid a second time. It came in over budget as well. And then the project we did with the parking lot on Main and Green, it actually came in slightly over budget, but it was within the contingency we had that we'd already built into the project. So those two projects, particularly the roof project, we had to come back and we did start all over again, and we did rebid it all over again, and we did incur that additional cost. The Simmons Park project, because the one bid was so grossly over budget and because it was CDBG money, we did not want to go back out with that and delay the process any further until we'd gotten some direction from council.
Every time that we put out another bid, do we use monies to get that done?
Absolutely. We, again, have to make sure that the document is advertised, that's additional advertising costs. We, again, have to use engineering costs because between the time we initially bid and the time that we have to rebid, we have to look at whether or not material prices and costs have changed. And then all of the necessary staff time that's involved in getting that document from engineer to staff review to publication to council meeting to approval is, you know, a doubling of the process. So we pretty much mirror the same costs at best, and sometimes because of changes in material costs, ultimately, we end up paying more for a project that we might have had a chance at, if we could have this discussion, had a chance at getting funded at a lower level.
Thank you. So moved.
Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Sue Ann Gardner, Derrick Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Aye. Resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance 16-12, establishing a bid review committee is passed. Next order of business we have is planning and municipal development. Ms. Musagne, if you could, please describe resolution 16-14 briefly, please.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
I'll be as brief as I can. Council has been trying to create more inducements for homeowner, homeownership in Norristown. And one of the impediments that most developers have pointed out to are the tapping fees. So council charged us with trying to figure out a way to help, a discussion with the waste authority, to see if they could, in fact, support the types of projects that council is looking to have, particularly the homeownership. We did have discussions. At the last meeting, I think we had proposed to have a joint resolution and that we had to table until we had the, we, meaning staff, had the opportunity to speak with the waste authority to see if we could come to some understanding. So at this point, staff and the solicitor met with the waste authority and came up with a solution on how we could certify that a developer is proposing a particular type of project that council would support, that we would certify, that is, Norristown would certify that that developer was doing the type of project we wanted, and that would be sent to the waste authority. The waste authority then would give the inducement for the tapping fees. That being the case, the certification actually consists of several facts, and that is, a developer must develop market rate housing for homeownership. It cannot be more than 25% for low-income households. And the developer has to participate in either federal, state, or county programs to be able to get the type of inducement. The solicitor for the waste authority assured the solicitor and the staff that they would amend the current resolution they have to reflect these changes that we're proposing to council. So this evening, we're asking council to approve this resolution so that we can proceed with the inducements. That's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Musagne. Any questions? Discussion? Vice President Perry?
Ms. Musagne, can you explain one more time, what is it for? To what market rate housing?
It's for owner-occupied housing that is market rate.
Yeah, I just don't want to get that confused. And are we trying to create homeownership in regards to that?
Yes, indeed. This is what council has been looking to do for quite some time, looking for inducements to create more homeownership in the municipality.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions, questions? If not, moving on. Would a member of council like to approve resolution 16-144 of 2016, requiring council certification of market rate owner-occupied housing projects as necessary to be eligible for a reduced system tapping fee offered by the NMWA? Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Sue Ann Gardner, Derrick Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution 16-144 is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Musagne, item B, council authorization to advertise zoning ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Madam President. If council will recall at the workshop, planning staff alerted council that there was a loophole with our definition of financial services that allowed for check cashing businesses downtown, something that was not intended in our new ordinance. Planning staff had asked council to do a cure. We've since found out that a cure is not the method in which we're to use, but rather a zoning text amendment is the method in which we have to use, since a cure can only be used once every three years. And we had done a cure for the telecommunication, I think, in 2015. That being the case, we've come back to council to ask us, rather to give us permission to advertise the zoning text amendment to allow for the definition of a financial institution which will exclude check cashing businesses in the downtown.
Thank you. Any discussions? Councilwoman Lewis?
Is that the only text exclusion financial, can you just elaborate on that?
For the moment, this will be the only change that we'll make. But following council's directive at the last meeting, I think that was the workshop meeting, where there were many other uses that council was interested in making sure that they were not appearing in the downtown. Planning staff has started putting that together. And in fact, we've started talking to the county staff to make sure that we're going to use the correct terminology or the correct definitions to exclude some of those businesses in areas that we do not want.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes, can you?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Scott Cooper?
Can you explain if a business is into this cash checking business and they decide to sell other things that are not in our ordinance to sell, what type of repercussions do we have to stop the continuation of things that should not be sold there?
Correct. We would have zoning enforcement action. And that is, we would have our zoning enforcement officer, send them a violation notice, letting them know that their use is not in keeping with the zoning, and they're given 30 days to actually cure it. Or they can actually appeal that decision to the zoning hearing board.
And if they adhere to that decision and continue to do it, say, sometime in the future, do we have any type of authority to even go further?
Yes, and I think the solicitor can explain it much better than I can.
Yes, if somebody is operating an illegal use in violation of our zoning ordinance and has issued a notice of violation and then loses at the zoning hearing board, but then continues to go ahead and do that, then we would file an action with the Montgomery County Court of Common Police, and they would issue an order to shut the business down. Have done that in several other municipalities, mainly around massage parlors and uses like that that aren't desirable. And so that would be the next course of action if someone still decided to fly in the face of our own ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Councilman Jones?
So there's a large amount of people that still do depend on check cashing facilities? Are there any efforts to, if we're, you know, we're encouraging check cashing places to not be downtown, are there any other efforts that the municipality will be making to make sure that there are more options as far as financial institutions are involved?
We're actually not saying that they're not allowed to exist. It's just we're just saying where they're allowed to exist. And we do have the district, that's the neighborhood commercial district, where they can exist, so that's how we provide for them. In zoning, you have to make sure that you try to provide for every type of use. The issue is that council decides where that they can in fact exist. And in this case, council had given clear direction in the past that those type of uses were best not for the downtown, but rather for the neighborhood commercial district. So there's still, there are still businesses that can service the people who need that service and can, even new ones can come and go in that district. So they're not being excluded from the municipality.
Vice President Perry?
With this zoning amendment, are we sticking to the plan of the 2010 comprehensive plan for our downtown area?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, would a member of council like to make a motion to advertise a public hearing to consider an amendment to the zoning ordinance which adds a definition for a financial institution? All in favor? Any ayes? Hearing none, the ayes have it, and that vote is passed for the zoning ordinance amendment.
Thank you.
Ms. Musagne, again, item C, in regards to award contract for the grant writing services consultant.
Thank you, Council President. One more time, council gave us direction to go out with an RFP to look for proposals from grant writers. The purpose was to get, to argument the planning department and the municipalities as a whole in terms of seeking and applying for grant funds, both public as well as private funding. So the planning department put out an RFP, May 25th of 2016. We received four proposals. And then there was an ad hoc committee consisting of council and staff that interviewed three of the firms, which included the Millennial Strategies, TMN Associates, and the Ferguson Group. Planning department has recommended that council award the contract writing services to Ferguson Group LLC for a fee not to exceed $3,450. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Musagne. Any questions? Discussion? Councilman Jones?
Were there specific areas that we were looking to address with our grant writer, provided that we have a grant writer?
Yes, we were pushing mostly economic development types of initiatives, and of course, had capital.
Okay. Now, would you guys consider parks and recreation, community, you know, space? A lot of those initiatives are usually driven by grant funding, which we've been lacking over, you know, past several years.
Actually, what we were trying to do, and we have been using, if I may, with all due respect, most of these parks that exist have been funded by grant funds for years. However, we want to reach further and get as much more money as we can to try, of course, to improve most of the parks. You will recall, when I reported maybe a month ago, that we were going after funds that especially the county would have for parks, but they cut back real far. And as I think council is also aware, at the federal level, state level, a lot of that funding has been cut back over the years. But there's an opportunity to be able to use this group to go after private foundations, which we believe will be very helpful in argumenting what we have to actually get more money so we can put it in parks.
Yeah, and that's part of my concern, because there are a lot of families who, they are moving here. However, they, you know, they would like, you know, an upgraded park with equipment and things that other townships have. So a lot of times, we may go after funding for the parks, but as we've seen, we haven't seen any, you know, significant improvements to our parks.
And that's the reason why we have this group help us out as well.
Madam President, if I could just add to that, because also kind of point out the fact that that's also one of the reasons that council has directed us to hold the series of town meetings, if you remember, Councilmember Jones, where we're going to get some citizen input. And the parks are about that. And part of the whole strategy behind that, as with other communities, is trying to leverage funds that we'll be able to identify from general fund capital dollars. And we'll certainly try to leverage that and extend that with grants. But that's also part of the conversation we've been having with you all in terms of being able to do, address not only some capital facilities, but some capital parks issues as well. And so in these meetings that are going to take place in September and October, we're actually going to be having an opportunity to get feedback from citizens about all the parks in town and the kinds of things that they want to see. And then council actually then will have, once we've gotten all that feedback from citizens, gotten the feedback from staff, then council has to deliberate in the amount of money now that you'll have, that's available to you. How do you do that in terms of addressing the parks? And then what we'll do with that money is, as much as we can with the grant writer that you've asked us to do, try to leverage that money against foundation money, which is where most of that opportunity is going to lie. And where the grant writer that you chose in the committee looked at what had a lot of strength in terms of reaching out to foundations as funding sources.
Vice President Perry?
Just a comment. One of the, one of the things that, one of the reasons why we did hire grant writing services is to make sure that all of our departments get their fair share of grants. That's the police department, the fire department, COES department, rec, and also the planning commission. The Ferguson Group was a very, very detailed group where they can help us outside of just grant writing. So it was a good presentation from all three groups, but the Ferguson Group was definitely the top notch.
Thank you, Vice President Perry. Councilwoman Lewis?
And I just want to add a comment that we had those three interviews, and they were all relatively close in cost. So the Ferguson Group is not, you know, the highest. So the Ferguson Group is not, you know, the highest or the lowest, but they were all pretty much in the same ballpark as far as cost. So they are definitely, we're getting our monies worth out of the Ferguson Group.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lewis. Any other comments? Questions or discussions? If not, would a member of council like to make a motion to recommend the planning, to recommend the planning department to award the contract for grant writing services to the Ferguson Group LLC? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, the ayes have it. That motion is approved. Next order of business we have is code enforcement. Michael Simonsen, if you could, just go over the addresses and the certificate of appropriateness for September meeting of 2016.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll go right down in the order here. 510 Hamilton Street was an application received to replace the front porch. 365 East Marshall Street was an application to stucco the front of the building and stucco the frames for all the windows. 408 West Ari Street was an application received to remove slate roofing and install shingle roofing system. 1024 West Ari Street was an application received to replace an existing sign with a new sign. 225 East Wood Street was an application received to install new vinyl windows and new shingles. 520 Stanbridge was an application received to repair the front porch and install a new front porch floor. And 206 East Jacoby was to restore the front porch with new beams and new shingles.
Thank you, Mr. Simonsen. Any questions? Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you. Mr. Simonsen, I just have a question regarding 365 East Marshall Street. Could you give a little bit more description, if you know it, as to the stucco? I thought there was, I thought there was sort of a move to try and look at it in terms of if it's only necessary to, for the structural integrity of the building.
The stucco is dependent, sorry, the stucco is dependent in the Harb district. A, it's totally, you can, A is totally removed, no stucco at all. In certain sections, B, if it's already existing, they're allowed to refinish or repair, essentially. They are not allowing for new install of stucco.
So this is essentially to repair existing stucco on that building?
Yes, this is a repair, and then you'll, further down, it's a repair of the building and stucco the frames for all the windows. So they're installing new windows and then going back with the stucco to cover back over.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Would a member of council like to approve the certificate of appropriateness for properties that applied for review by the Historical Architectural Review Board?
I have a question.
For the following addresses.
I apologize, I do have a question. Sorry. The one sign that's being replaced, I didn't note the address. What type of sign is it, and how is it changing, if you know?
It's, it's increasing the size of the sign. There is a sign existing already at 1024 West Ari, but since the business is new, they still have to go to Harb to replace the sign. So there's a sign currently there.
Thank you, Mr. Simonsen. There was a motion on the floor.
Second.
All in, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, the ayes have it. That motion is approved. Next order of business we have is public safety. Chief Tabit, if you could, resolution 16-142 for disabled parking.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm requesting that council consider a motion to approve resolution 16-142 regarding the designation of three disabled parking spaces. The locations are 631 Corson Street, 5 East Basin Street, 927 West Ari Street. The resident at each location have demonstrated they have a physical limitation that make this accommodation necessary.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Discussions? Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve resolution number 16-142 regarding requests for disabled parking spaces? Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Yes. Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Sue Ann Gardner, Derek Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Aye. Resolution 16-142 for disabled parking is approved. Would a member of council like to adjourn tonight's meeting?
No.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.